Millies?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch? Absent. Pitliano? Absent. Norman?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Time is allocated for public comment in its three minutes with the permission of the Commission Chairman. Additional time may be permitted. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And I would also point out, if you have a cellphone here this morning, we would appreciate you turning it off or putting it in vibrate mode. Thank you. Item three, approval of minutes.
Public comment?
Yes, sir.
Have a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. My name is Aaron Gay. I live at 1202 East Court Avenue in Pixley, and I am the Chairman of the Pixley Town Council. I am here today to correct some information presented during your June 22, 2011, meeting, specifically regarding the Pixley Biodegester Project, PSP 10-060, PSR, Pixley Biogas LLC, Cowrun Renewable Fuels LLC. Let me begin by apologizing for not being present at the previous meeting. We were given some incorrect secondhand information at the agenda item regarding the Biodegester had been pulled and would not be addressed by this Commission, or I would have been here. We did, however, get confirmation on Tuesday, June 21, 2011, that Commission members received our written response by email to this project. However, we see no acknowledgement in the transcripts from the June 22, 2011, meeting that the response had been received. I would like to re-submit that letter this morning to the Commission members. I would also like to correct some of the information given on behalf of the Town Council during that meeting. Elena Saldivar is a respected member of the Pixley Town Council. However, there was no direction given for her to address the Planning Commission on our behalf. She was simply here because she did not receive the incorrect information that we did not need to be here with the item pulled, as we misunderstood it. Furthermore, although it was corrected toward the end of the public comment discussion, the official vote was five to two in opposition to the project as presented to us on June 20, 2011. However, based on the discussion that evening, I have communicated on behalf of the Town Council to Cowrun Renewable Fuels and California Dairies Incorporated that if significant changes were made to the project that addresses the concerns of California Dairies Incorporated as well as the community residents, we would like the opportunity to reevaluate the project. Please allow me at this time to read our written response for the record. Dear members of the Tulare County Planning Commission, we appreciate your willingness to continue your discussion action of the above referenced project so that the Pixley Town Council could provide a forum for our constituents and our Town Council to hear the details of the proposed biogas facility and submit a response back to you. On Monday, June 20, 2011, the Pixley Town Council held a special meeting for that purpose. As part of that meeting, we invited Cowrun Renewable Fuels to introduce the project, and California Dairies Incorporated, as well as Three R Land and Development, to share their concerns with the project. As part of our public comment section of the agenda, our community was invited to share their concerns and ask questions followed by a response from each of the parties. Some of the concerns brought before the Pixley Town Council included, but were not limited to, the lack of a full environmental impact report, including possible adverse effects to our local water table, odor from the open mixing pit, location of the digester at the ethanol site rather than at a dairy, and lack of control over the trucks bringing materials to and from the facility. After final comments by each of the parties, public discussion was closed, and the Pixley Town Council voted five to two against the project as submitted for us to review. Again, thank you for the added opportunity to review this project. Our sincere hope is that future projects in the Pixley community area will follow normal notification procedures so that the community of Pixley can effectively work together to promote projects that enhance our community. Sincerely, Aaron Gay, Chairman, Pixley Town Council. And I would add, thank you again for your time this morning. It's always our desire to work with the Planning Commission regarding the future of Pixley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This letter will be so noted and added to the information that this Commission has and may be part of discussions for the future. Yes or no? Yeah. Yes. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item three in the agenda, approval of minutes from our June 22, 2011 session. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
That was absent, abstained.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four, consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar this morning. We are a few minutes ahead of public hearings scheduled for 9:15, 5A. There are no item sixes and correspondence on item seven. So let's move on to item eight. Ben, can you get that through in eight minutes? All right. We'll move on to item eight, A, summary of Board of Supervisors meeting for July... Sorry. My date's in my months this morning, June 28, 2011, and July 12, 2011.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, on June 28, the only really planning-related item that was on the agenda that day was a response to the grand juror report on marijuana gardens. And that's only partially a planning issue, but so you know, marijuana... Dealing with marijuana issues is a big planning issue, and there is a big effort going on right now on how to address those. There have been talks about making amendments to our zoning ordinance and how we deal with those, and so you might expect that sometime in the future to come before you.
Okay.
On July 12, 2011, there were a couple of things. One of them was the development impact fees were on the agenda. It was the second reading of the ordinance, and that went through. There were also 14 partial non-renewals for Williamson Act contracts on the agenda that day, and all went through. And so we did have a few items, but I have nothing else to report from those meetings.
Thank you. Any Director's updates?
Yeah, just to let you know, just a couple of things. We are working with the City of Dinuba right now on implementing our new memorandum of understanding that was signed between that city and the county. And what it means for, at least for planning, is any projects that are developed within the urban area boundary around that city but within the county would conform to Dinuba development standards according to that memorandum of understanding. And so we are working on our end with the city on getting those pinned down and then getting those put into our processes so when projects come in in that area, we have a clear path for them to follow and clear standards to meet that. That'll take some changes to our... Maybe to our ordinance or at least to our processes, so. Also, I'm pleased to announce that we have a combined workshop for the general plan going to take place in either mid or late August. Don't have the exact date yet, I'm told, but that's... But it's coming up. It's been long anticipated. Also, just a quick report. We've had our project review committee meetings begin. This is the committee that was formed by staff members to sit down with applicants before a project is turned in, kind of a pre-project conference almost, similar to what the cities do around us. And those so far seem to be going pretty well. Had some good dialogue on some projects, and they seem to be meeting the intent of those meetings. And so we're going to be watching the progress on those and see and try to measure and analyze how well those affect project processing and see if they're really helping out. And so that's underway, too. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you very much. We still have some time remaining. Item nine, Planning Commission discussion items for future agenda. I guess we can save that unless someone has something. Does anyone have any comments or discussion before we proceed? So our 9:15 schedule is still a few minutes off, so we will adjourn for five... Four minutes. We'll re-adjourn at 9:15.
Maria, what's the name of the network?
13th, 2011. We are addressing item 5A of public hearings. PSP 10-055, Gleanings for the Hungry, special use permit to add additional residence for workers, one-tenplex dwelling unit, two duplexes, and 14 recreational vehicle spaces in excess of those allowed in the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20-acre minimum zone. The site is located on the west side of Road 104, south of the alignment of Avenue 432, north of Saltona, and our contact this morning is April Hill. Good morning, April.
Speaking into the microphone. As Chairman Millies summarized, this is for a use permit for additional housing for an existing facility that was permitted by first in 1987 for ag processing, food processing facility, and additional farm worker... Additional housing for workers who are actually volunteers. It's right at the northern point, across the... Just across from Fresno County. Zoning is surrounded by AE20. Here's an aerial. It's ag and scattered rural residences. Groups of up to about 200 volunteers come to the site and spend a week at a time. They travel by bus, so traffic is minimized. The... There are about 20 volunteers who work full... Who stay full... Live full-time on the site. And what Gleanings wanted to do is make more comfortable housing for those volunteers and expand the number of RV sites on the... RV spaces on the site. Let's go through a few site photos. The entrance, the office on the left, one of the original residential, almost dormitory apartment buildings for these volunteers who come for a week at a time. Sort of a backside view, some of the... Where some of the RVs have been staying. Sorry, bad lighting on this one. This is just one of the houses on the site now. There are several duplexes, a triplex, and the eightplex that we started out with. The most recent, eightplex. These... This is where they have concreted the RV... The proposed RV spaces, ready to go. And this is from the back end, from the RV spaces, looking towards the plant. This is the cafeteria to house the... To feed the workers. Just a few shots of the facility. We'll go back on that one. Let's say a previous one. There are, as we expect to have on food processing sites where there's dehydrating, there's sulfur or phosphine gas to eliminate the animal... The vectors, insects. Short report. After much research, do the Commissioners have any questions for me or for the applicant? Mr. Algov is here to answer any questions you might have.
Is that the end of your report?
I report.
All right. Thank you.
April, is there any process water in this... In the plant there in the...
Process? The water goes is... They have a... They're under the... Oh, excuse me. Now I have to think back and look at my environmental... There is water, of course, that is used to wash. The excess water is... Goes into it. It's hauled off to mix with the cold fruit and feed to...
I read that, so that's why I was at... So that's... All of it is hauled off to use elsewhere.
Right, right. Things have improved from the old days when they first started out.
Okay.
It's to be used for irrigation, and no longer is used that way.
And how long will, say, the near 200 people be there? How long does that?
They're about a week at a time. They come in on busloads, stay for the week, do the dehydrating. It's just during the summer, during the fruit drying season.
How many weeks, I guess, is the whole process?
It's just the summer months for dehydrating, and they're... They also do packaging of dehydrated... Of fruit... Of, excuse me, vegetable mix, vegetable soup mix during the winter months, some of the winter months, so.
I just have a little trouble with that much going into a septic system, and basically that much raw sewage being put into the ground. I know they can engineer it and get it done, but I don't think the water table's real high. I mean, real low right through there, probably. And it's just... It's just a concern to me to have that much sewage going into the ground in such a concentrated area. But...
Well, I worked with environmental health, and we were looking at the capacity of the system, of both systems, because there are two systems, one serving most of the houses and the RV spaces. The older one with... That also has the plant. We have a rationale that if they don't... Most of the plant water is hauled off, and so they're not having to... It's maybe at capacity.
Right.
That's why environmental health asks for a certification of that system.
Are the RVs in tanks? I mean, the drops? Does that go into the septic system as well?
I don't believe that you have a dump station on-site. Yes, please, Mr. Gove.
Excuse me. Let me open up the public testimony. I have not done that yet. I will open public testimony right now. Commissioner Diaz, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Are you still asking questions? I won't open it unless you're...
Oh, no, no. I'm ready to listen.
All right.
I asked a question, and so I'm going to get an explanation.
All right. So I will open public testimony at this time. If there are opponents or proponents, step forward. State your name and address, please.
My name is Algov. I'm at 43029 Road 104, and I want to address this because this is a very critical issue for this. We have two septic tank systems on the site that were designed by engineers that are qualified in that area. We have one that's called the Plant Septic Tank System. That's where a number of the summer volunteers stay. Then they have what we call the Residential Septic Tank System, and that's for all the residents, and that includes the new tentplex and the RV sites. Okay? But the process water for the summer processing of dried fruit is separate handled... Separate... Handled separately. It does not go in the septic tank system. We accumulate it in a pit and put it into storage tanks in which we have a 4,000-gallon tanker take it to the dairy farms. So it does not touch the ground. It's part of the heifer feed that goes into their feed. It's a very, very important issue, so for you to bring up.
But that's it, as far as the... You know, I know it can be engineered. Guess I'd like to have a little more testimony, maybe from somebody that's got more knowledge about it. Things in the past. You have some?
I was in the irrigation business for another years. We would, you know, 4,000 gallons is not very much water when you go to irrigate.
Oh, no, I'm talking... Not so much that, because that's being hauled off. I'm talking about the 200 people...
Trying to get the point. I don't have a lot of experience other than that.
I just wish I had some more information on it, because I...
But if it's been engineered by an engineering firm, I mean, then we just have to accept that it works.
Yeah, because you'll find that in the packet. I put a copy of that, and who engineered, the name of the engineer in that for the two systems, so.
Some of that, right.
You have that information.
And I'm not real familiar with the soil types there, but I suspect it's a lot of hard and harder soils, so not a lot of precipitation, and that's probably why you had to have an engineer.
It did say the water table was 46 feet in 2009.
That's close.
That's awfully close.
But they're hauling it away, so it shouldn't...
No, that's not...
I know what you're saying.
Septic tank isn't hauled away.
Right. But I'm just saying, I don't think we're here to talk about the... Well, I guess we are, because we're talking about the new housing. You're right. I'm wrong.
Septic tank system has its own leaching field. Yes, that's correct for each one.
I apologize, but you're correct.
Well, okay. That's... I mean, I won't... You're asking questions.
Thank you.
I think I'm happy with it, yeah, but I'm still... I'm through.
Mr. Diaz was asking about whether there's a dump station. RVs go elsewhere.
A dump station, no. The RV sites are connected into the septic tank system because we have the room for it. They were engineered for it. Now, when the second duplex duplex in the future future is added, we will take away three of the RV sites to put it in place. So you see that on the site plan. So we stay within the limits of the septic tank engineering.
Just for the record, so you know, I'm a general engineering contractor long before I was a real estate broker, so I'm an underground guy. I understand what's going on, but I haven't seen the specs, so I can't...
Are there any other comments from the public at this time, either for or against this project? If not, I will close the public testimony on this phase and ask staff to draw recommendations on this project, please.
Staff recommends that the Commission accept the negative declaration as the appropriate environmental document, which would be our first resolution, and to move to approve the proposal as recommended and adopt the attached resolution with establishing findings and conditions. I will note that I made a clerical error on condition number 31, and I missed on an address, so I'll be correcting the address from Oakdale. It's about building line setbacks. I'll be correcting that address on condition 31 on the second resolution. So I would recommend that the second move to approve a proposal as recommended and adopt attached resolution establishing findings as modified, findings and conditions as modified.
Okay. So item one, accept negative declaration as appropriate environmental document. We have several options to accept it, to deny it, refer it back to staff. Do I have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to accept that environmental document, the negative deck on this... Given the use of this project and what's in the immediate vicinity, I would make that a motion to accept number one.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
May I have a roll call, please?
Gong? Millies?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Can I make just a quick comment on how we voted, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We had a former Planning Commissioner who was the head of a Dinuba... I think it was Dinuba...
Off the Irrigation District.
Yeah, that was it. And he was always concerned about septic systems, and this is more a comment to the staff and the applicant. It's not to the applicant. You know, we require long-term monitoring on dairies of wastewater. You know, when you have groundwater at 43 feet, I didn't think anything like that existed in Tulare County anymore. It's not the rule, but it seems like we should have some way to monitor those wells. And I know wells are private entities, but at the time of the planning, it might be something we want to look at in the future, is to have some ongoing monitoring of the domestic wells just to see if there's any transfer of effluent into the groundwater. So that's the end of my comment. Does that kind of cover your thoughts to that?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
My no vote was because basically I didn't feel I had enough information on this thing, and it is engineered, and it's probably right. Maybe staff could have an engineer, soils engineer, or waste engineer come in and explain the safety margins that we have, particularly when the water's at 43 feet. I just didn't feel comfortable with it.
Environmental... We've talked about having environmental health services staff come. I believe they're a little shorthanded due to vacation today.
Oh, yeah. Well, it didn't...
But I do have... I do have water test results. I did not include it in your packet. I can pull those for you. And I also had the report on the two engineered systems. And in future, I'll definitely be adding that to the report with this concerns, like the potential concerns, because I was asking the questions, too.
I just... It would be nice if somebody that could come and maybe explain the logic behind it and what the industry standards are maybe, and what levels of cushion of margin for error we've got on this, particularly when we've got groundwater that close. If we had groundwater like it is around Tipton and Pixley at its 200 feet, then, you know, I don't even have half a concern. But at 43 feet, I'd like to know.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
I think a couple mitigating things in my mind, too, to keep in mind here is, number one, when we do this stuff in this area, it seems around, especially as we get closer to Kings River, we have a lot of people that come forward and express concerns. I don't see that in this project, and also I see a temporary use, so that's why I would think that environmentally, I think we're as good as we could get at this point.
We have another action here to move to approve proposal as recommended, adopt the attached resolution establishing findings and conditions subject to modification as discussed. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the proposal?
I think with that change that you discussed, I think I'm willing to make a motion on that as recommended by Stone.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong? Millies?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you very much, April. Maria? Moving on to item 5B, PPM 11-004/PLA. David and Gail Jackson and Daniel and Amy Jackson with Craig Knopf. Tentative parcel map, lot line adjustment to allow the creation of an 8.83 acre parcel through the lot line adjustment, parcel one, and then the division of the remaining 38.88 acres into two parcels. Parcel two equalling 18.44 acres, parcel three equalling 18.44 acres in the AE20 exclusive agricultural 20-acre minimum zone. Site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 408 and Road 36 east of Kingsburg. Our contact this morning is Dana Metlin. Good morning, Dana.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Due to a possible conflict of interest, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this one.
So noted. Commissioner Aguilar will recuse himself for this particular item on the agenda, item 5B. Commissioner Aguilar will recuse himself for this particular item on the agenda, item five B. Yes, Dana?
Right, Commissioner? First, I guess I would like to correct an error. The acreage after the lot line adjustment would be thirty-six point eight-eight acres, not the thirty-eight as written on your agenda.
Thirty-six point eight-eight.
Correct. And this project will create three parcels out of an existing, two parcels. And it's located north, best part of the county, near the Kings River. The north side of Avenue forty-eight, east of. Is the site, right here. An aerial view, as you can see, the project is located on the east side of the Kings River. And the site contains agricultural and residential uses. The surrounding area contains agriculture and scattered residences. And the project is located within the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and it is zoned AE twenty. The proposal was found to be compatible with Rural Valley Lands Plan and all applicable elements of the general plan. And is the project site. And I just want to make note that originally there are three assessor parcel numbers on this project. But these two parcel numbers here, seventy-five and seventy-seven, are actually the same parcel. And they were given two numbers at the previous project lot line adjustment, because they do cross over taxing districts. Different taxing assessment for those two sections. The existing configuration was created on October thirteen, two thousand ten, by lot line adjustment number PLA dash twelve. And that was proposed parcel one, if I can find my arrow. This parcel here is proposed parcel one. And what we'll be doing is moving this line right here back up to its original position, where it was prior to the previous lot line adjustment. And the director decided that we did not need a zone variance for this project for the lot line adjustment, because it was reverting back to its original parcel. Ordinarily, because this is less than the twenty acres required in the AE twenty zone, that would not be allowed. But because we were reversing it back to its original size, director determined that this would be allowed. So after the lot line adjustment is completed, then we will do the parcel map. And we will create then parcel two and parcel three. Parcel two and parcel three will be each, was it eighteen acres? Eighteen point four-four acres each. And because, again, these would create less than twenty acres, a zone variance minor deviation was submitted prior to this project. And it was approved by the director. That zone variance number was PZV eleven oh one. It was a minor deviation, which means that if it's within the ten percent size deviation allowed in the zone, and this being AE twenty, we would allow a deviation of either two acres, ten percent of twenty is two, in either direction. So the eighteen acres point four-four for each of these parcels fits into that. Definition. Let me see. The adjacent property owners were notified of the proposed minor deviation by mailing on May twelve, two thousand eleven, which was at least ten days prior to the approval of the zone variance minor deviation. And no one responded to the mailing of the notice. A waiver of the final map was requested. The request meets the requirements of section seven oh one, twenty-three sixty C, with regard to the creation of two parcels when the original parcel has frontage on a public road and is not located within an urban area boundary. The project is exempt from SEQA under section one five three one five pertaining to minor land deviations in urban areas. And staff is recommending that your commission accept the categorical exemption as the appropriate environmental determination and move to conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM eleven oh oh four slash PLA and the waiver of the final map and adopt the resolution establishing findings and conditions. And that concludes staff's report. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Dana. This is a public hearing. I will open public testimony. Are there any in the public that wish to speak for or against this project? Please forward, come forward and state your name and address. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Craig Knopf. I'm with Quad Knopf in Visalia.
Good morning.
Address is fifty-one ten West Cypress. I'm here representing the Jackson family this morning. The, I'm pleased with the staff report. We're in agreement with the content of it as it was presented by Dana. I don't know if there's a strong need to understand the, the, the relation of the lot line adjustment and how that's a part of this project, but just to clear that up. Daniel is David's son who owned the northerly parcel. It was eight acres, or eight point four, eight point eight-four acres. And it was created five or six years ago, and a variance was approved at that time to make that parcel smaller than twenty acres. Daniel has a growing family and was wanting to remodel that home and enlarge it to accommodate his family, and also wanting to build a separate garage. So he and dad decided to adjust their line. It was a challenging lot line adjustment, because it crossed a school district boundary and, to make, and thus the two assessors' numbers that Dana referenced. But it was completed and it was approved. And then after that was done, Daniel and David decided that they could accommodate their families better by switching properties, switching homes, basically. Daniel would get in dad's big home, and, and David and his wife then would move down into the smaller home. It's also, this parcel map is fulfilling ultimate goal of dividing then dad's, dad's ranch between those two sons, one of which has built a, a new home on half the property. So the parcel three is going to another son, and Daniel will be occupying parcel two, and dad will end up with parcel one. There's no new development planned. These are all existing homes. If you have any questions that have occurred, happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other questions from the public, I'll close public, public testimony at this time. And ask for a summarization of the actions that we have before us. Option one, accept the categorical, categorical exemption as the appropriate environmental determination and move to approve the proposal as recommended and adopt the attached resolution establishing findings. Move with modifications, deny or refer back? May I have a motion from our Commission?
I'll move, I'll move to accept the category exemption, approve APM eleven dash zero zero four slash PLA and accept the.
I would second.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The only item left this morning would be if there are any further comments from my fellow Commissioners regarding discussion items or requests for future agenda items or actions, are there?
This isn't a request for future agenda necessarily, but I wanted to ask Ben a question about the discussion. I guess it was what, yesterday at the Supes about the impact fees, developer fees?
Chairman and Commissioner Elliot, I'm not sure I wasn't in attendance myself.
Okay.
I just know the result.
There was something I noticed go by this week in terms of they were discussing it on the agenda. So I was wondering if you could give us an update on that.
Yeah, that was what, I, I brought it up in the director's report, that they, they did have their second reading for the developer impact, so my understanding is that that got approved.
So it is approved?
That's what I've been, that's what I'm.
Well, that might be good.
I'm not speaking firsthand, because I didn't actually attend.
Okay, well, maybe you could clarify that for us in the next meeting.
Maybe I can help, shouldn't. The board did approve the basic foundation for setting fees. No fees were set at this time, because there needs to be some agreement between the county and the cities for, for those types of impact fees, because the fees would affect development in the cities themselves.
But the, does the city of Visalia have development fees right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's what I thought, so. We're gonna be pretty, we're gonna be pretty much in line with that, is what I expect.
Sorry?
I expect ours to be pretty much in line with what the cities are doing.
Well, once there's agreement, there's been negotiations going on for two years.
It, it's kind of got two parts to it. Part of it is what we would charge applicants in the county, in the unincorporated county, for just a normal project. What should those fees be? And then the other part is the city's paying for their, when something is built in the cities, they're using county facilities, in theory, at least to a certain extent. What should those fees be? Should those, and the cities would charge those fees for us and, and send us the money. That's, I think, the heart of the negotiation is, is exactly how much should that be? Should that be a full development impact fee, partial? Because there's an assumption that they, a lot of their services would be provided by the city.
I think it's the only thing, it's a little bit unfortunate, we're going through all this now. We should have done this a couple of years ago, and everybody was flush. But such is life.
And fortunate thing is, is that there is no extra money, you know. Totally against any additional fees, unless the city's willing to share the fee that they charge. But, you know, we can't even subdivide land right now. Costs forty-five thousand dollars to build a lot. And Wayne and I have been selling lots, finished lots, for twenty-five. So you're not gonna see any new residential development in Tulare County. And when this additional fee on top, it's gonna further slow the economy. And I believe that, not just because I'm in the real estate business, but building is the basic industry to a strong economy. And, you know, it went way far to the other way, but, you know.
Well, it's a.
Well, and you can afford to pay so much.
Well, it's a huge problem, too, because Tulare County is sort of straddling right about the midpoint, where it's either affordable or not affordable to build. So in most places now, the cost to build a new house, you can't even sell it for that amount.
That's right, because.
So that's where we're looking at right now. And the development fees, I mean, we, like I said, we should have had them a long time ago, but they're not gonna be the, the factor that, I, I don't think, the factor that puts us over the edge. We're already there in terms of the cost.
Also, I noticed that online right now, or is this meeting being broadcast over the internet?
Cameras. We're not set up.
Supervisors normally.
It says, it says it's on voice only, audio only.
Yeah, we're not, we're not set up for, for that yet. We have the basic foundation for it, but we, we haven't.
We haven't got live.
We'll be downloading them on iTunes soon, don't worry.
I can put speaker here myself.
Are there any other comments? If not, I will adjourn this meeting of the Tulare County Planning Commission. We will reconvene on July twenty-seventh, two thousand eleven, at nine AM in these chambers.